Thank you and welcome everybody, all councillors and Mr CEO who were present for this evening's ordinary council meeting on the 20th of July 2021. As per the guidelines issued by the Minister for Local Government from the 1st of May 2020 to the 1st of November 2020, being the prescribed period, councils do not need to provide permits of the public to physically attend meetings. Providing public access to live streamed events satisfies the public attendance test during this prescribed period. Councillors, I would invite you and Mr CEO to stand also for the traditional. Oh, sorry, the 21st, yes. I've read the live, oh, sorry, I beg your pardon. I've jumped from one section to another already, please take your seats. Because that was prior to the live streaming, I apologise everybody. Councils keen to engage with members of the community and now live streams the formal council meetings to make them accessible. The stream will be available to view on our Ararat Rural City Council's Facebook page from 6pm and on council's website, www.ararat.vic.gov.au from Thursday morning following the council meeting. You do not require a Facebook account to watch the live broadcast. Simply enter www.facebook.com/aratruralcitycouncil into your address bar. And now back to the proper order of the meeting, I apologise for the false start. Please stand for the traditional acknowledgement, opening prayer and councillor's pledge commencing with councillor Awur, thank you.
Traditional acknowledgement, we acknowledge the traditional islands of the land on which we meet today and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging.
And councillor Atkinson?
The opening prayer, Almighty God, we humbly ask you to help us as elected councillors of the Ararat Rural City Council to guide our deliberations. Prosper what is your will for us, to your honour and glory, and for the welfare and benefit of the people whom we serve in the Ararat Rural City.
And councillor Beals?
Councillor's pledge, we will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interests of the people of the municipal district of Ararat Rural City Council and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discretion vested in us under the Local Government Act 2020 and the Local Government Act 1989 and any other act to the best of our skill and judgement.
Thank you, please be seated. We have a full role under councillors, therefore there are no apologies to be received this evening. I have a recommendation that the confirmation of minutes be moved, that the minutes of the council meeting held the 17th of June 2020 be confirmed. Do I have councillor Beals and second councillor Braigway? Those in favour, that is carried. Councillors, disclosure of interest that should be made immediately prior to any relevant item being discussed, Mr CEO?
Obviously none of disclosures, no?
Thank you, none forthcoming, very good. And item 1.6, admission of urgent business, Mr CEO?
No urgent business items.
Very good, no urgent business items for that part of the meeting that closes section 1. Section 2, public participation, item 2.1, petitions. As per the clause of our meeting procedure, any petition presented council must lay on the table until the next ordinary meeting of council and no motion, other than to receive the petition or joint matter may be accepted by the Chair unless the council agrees to deal with it earlier. Consequently, we do have a petition tabled as item 2.1.1 regarding Dean Street. Mr CEO, invite him to speak to this petition.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we've received a petition from residents of Dean Street in Ararat, which among other things deals with like a proper drainage, home driving on their street and concerns I guess about older residents in that area, that working safely on the next street, which is often bothering due to the drainage issues. Council officers will review that sheet during the coming month and present a report for the next council meeting on that issue.
Very good, thank you, Mr CEO, councillors, are there any questions of the CEO regarding receipt of this petition? There being none, we have a recommendation that the petition requesting council to inspect Dean Street in Ararat be received and lay on the table for consideration at next month's meeting, the 25th of August 2020. Do I have somebody, councillor Awur, second councillor Hull? Those in favour, and that is carried. Moving to section 3 of our meeting for tonight, we have a number of items in this section which I think go a long way to making sure that the boundaries and the group parameters under which we, within which we operate in local government are well explained. So, getting off with item 3.1, the Municipal Emergency Management Plan, Mr CEO?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this Municipal Emergency Management Plan has been reviewed by our new coordinator of emergency management, Joel Farah, who I don't think had a chance to work yet because Covid prevented him attending tonight of course, but we'll, we present this for you. It's a review of the existing plan, which will say is from 2020 to 2023 and it's been presented for you to read prior to the meeting and it covers section 20 of the Emergency Management Act that requires us to have such a plan in place. If there are any questions, sorry?
Yeah, are there any questions, councillor Atkinson?
I just wondered, I thought it was an excellent plan, really first rate, but I wondered in section 3.4.2, which refers to the Municipal Emergency Management Group, if council would consider inviting the Jabberong, the Warrong and the Dura Warrong elders to participate in future in those deliberations. And I'm saying this or mentioning this or requesting this because of the excellent fire management skills they traditionally have and their knowledge of former employer and other entities affected by disasters. And I'm sure it would go a long way towards making them feel included and welcome. So I would just request the council, consider that inclusion, please.
Mr CEO, could you please give us some detail regarding the constitution of membership?
And councillor Deusch, I would want some additional advice to us here too, I think some information on this, obviously. Look, the group has to maintain a real practical focus around emergency management and then typically the membership of the group is based on the People Engaged Actively, at agency level, around emergency management recovery activity. So there's a need for us to maintain very strong focus on those issues. So I appreciate councillor Atkinson's commentary around fire management by indigenous people, but I think there's a need for it to be very focused on response to issues rather than issues leading up to them. So councillor Beals, have you got any, you know, there's a long time to remember that.
The motion didn't move, so I won't speak, I'll speak when I approve the motion, but I'll attempt to do after the question.
Are there any further questions, councillors?
Can you make a comment?
A comment can come when we are actually debating the motion, once the motion is placed, councillors. So no further questions regarding the presentation of this item and the plan?
Then I'll move the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Beals, moves the recommendation that council endorse the Municipal Emergency Management Plan thereby fulfilling the legislative requirements of the Emergency Management Act 1986. Do I have a second, councillor Braigway? Thank you, councillor Beals, you wish to speak?
The first thing I'd like to make this is the Emergency Management Act, it's not the fire plan or anything like that. It's a much bigger area that it covers. There are already 13 members on this committee and they run from where across the local people to the most senior police officer in the district. So it's got a wide base, but it is controlled by the roles that it fulfils and it's in full emergency management. One of the other groups are the gas companies, electricity companies, everyone like that. So there are other areas where other individuals can be involved. There is a fire group with the CFA, the members of the public, the CFA meet regularly before fire season to point out any issues that the community might have. This is a very specific sort of higher level than, well, it's supposed to be way up here, but we tend to be a little bit further down because we do both, because we're multi-skilled in Ararat. And we've kept some groups on this committee that legislatively don't have to be there anymore, we keep it for the community. I've had a lot to do with emergency management over the last 30 years, including currently being the chairman of this committee and on the state MAV, Emergency Management Committee. And most of our time is not actually spent just on the fire matters, there's just so many issues, you know, industrial waste has been dumped and all the others that matters. But this is what we have to do legislatively, we call regularly during the years for people to see. Very rarely does anyone put their name in. It's a good plan, I love to see it.
Thank you, anybody else wishing to speak to the motion?
Councillor Deusch? I would recommend strongly that we approve it, thereby this. Emergency management is a very complex subject. Those people which are involved in it, those people which have to respond to certain situations, then what's now what they're doing, they have to know what they're doing. It is very easy for anybody from outside to criticize. The immense knowledge that is displayed within the emergency occurs because some of them could be done better this way. We are obliged by the state government to have a management system which rules.
I don't want any interference from anybody.
I'd just say, there is scope for including others, particularly in recovery plans and I'm very keen to be as inclusive as possible for the culture and the knowledge, the depth of wisdom and the love of the land that our Aboriginal people have. And I think if there is any opportunity to include them, we should grasp the right hands. And I notice that there is room for other people to be invited as required, others can be co-opted, so thank you.
I think, if I can maybe comment on the plan, I think that flexibility is absolutely crucial to our success to ensure that expert opinion can be brought in at appropriate time, rather than just simply being a silo of expertise. Any other councillors wishing to speak for or against the motion? Councillor Beals, you wish?
I've got no issue with what councillor Atkinson's said, but the reality is it's already there. The committee already invites various different groups to speak to them. It doesn't have to be formalised and if you do formalise it, a large document becomes a much larger document and it sits on a shelf and is never used.
Thank you, I shall put the recommendation to the vote, those in favour and against, that is carried. Moving to item 3.2, the Audit and Risk Committee Charter, against, CEO?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councillor representative this evening, the Audit and Risk Committee Charter, the consideration. The Local Government Act 2020 requires council to establish an audit risk committee, which includes a membership based on councillors and also external representatives or experts in finance, public sector management and risk, to assist management of council and also council understand those issues more fully and how we're managing our own organisation. Section 44 stipulates the issues that that committee should deal with. You have the charter document in front of you, it's already been to our existing audit committee, which are established to, for their review as well, we have seen the results of that. Membership of the committee has suggested that we actually have two council representatives on the audit committee and three external representatives. And also I'm recommending this evening that the representatives remain as they are at that current audit committee with the terms remaining the same as they are to. There is one exception, one major change to the tenure of external members is that they can now have three three-year terms rather than two year, three year terms. That's in line with the recommendation of the Duke of Victoria in the framing of this document. This document follows very closely the model rules and developments of the Duke of Victoria for us to apply. You'll also note a very detailed annual work plan at the independence board at the end of this document.
Very good, are there any questions, councillors? That's clean the case, councillor Braigway is going to move motion, seconded by councillor Hull. The recommendation is in five parts as outlined by Mr CEO. Councillor Braigway, you wish to speak to the motion?
Only that I think this is a further step in the right direction and I, I think the audit committee is, the existing audit committee has done good work for this council and particularly the external members, which have been just renewed, we have renewed that and refreshed that membership. So I think it all goes well for the future.
Any other councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Beals?
I'll just make the point that some of the independent members, external members are very recently appointed, so they're quite fresh. There is a balance of external people over councils, which I think is also very important. They were advertised in the media, they went through a selection process, you know, people just picked off the shelf and at the end of October, when the elections are, this will have to be reviewed because we don't know who will be on the council. So it's only really, for the council reps, it's only until October.
Thank you councillor Beals, councillor Hull?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was on the audit committee at the time when the new format was developed by the government a number of years ago and at that time, Mr Brian Keane was one of the first external members. I have been very impressed by him and the other members, external members who were part of that committee at the time. I'm pleased to see that Mr Keane is still there at this point in time. I don't know the new members, but I'm sure they will perform an excellent role in the same way that our other external members have and I think that the actual charter for this risk management committee is excellent and I think it will serve the council well.
Thank you councillor. Any other councillors wishing to speak? Councillor Braigway, would you like to speak? Recommendation in five parts, that council approve the Audit and Risk Committee Charter, we endorse the draft 12-month work plan and appoint the committee members as listed, appoint Mr Brian Keane as Chair for the next 12 months and that the aggregate time served on council's previous audit committee with that on the new Audit and Risk Committee for purposes of managing, inspiring and renewal of terms for external members. Councillors, those in favour and against, that is carried, thank you. Item 3.3, draft governance rules, Mr CEO, would I speak to this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm only going to be.
You are, you're pleased you said you will?
But councillors have said the draft governance rules, we've had a chance to read them, they replace our exist, they will replace our existing, I'm trying to think of the local law around meeting procedure and governance. They're required with the Local Government Act 2020. I actually personally think they're a much cleaner, a more effective way of dealing with governance of council and council meeting procedure. They are required to go for some public comment, we don't have to do the old section 2.2.3 public comment any longer. My suggestion would be that we put them out for 14 days public comment. We've displayed on our website, we've prepared media releases for tomorrow to inform people they're available for public comment and we'll take that into account when they, when it comes through. I must say that the governance rules we have presented to councillors this evening are based on a model provided by our local government solicitors and which is based very, very strongly on the model rules provided by local government Victoria. So we're following the letter of law pretty closely. There's one issue we do need to deal with in, in chapter 7, the election period policy, which is coming on us very quickly. You'll see that there are references to the former Local Government Act, the 1989 Act within those. The reason that is because it was suggested to us that what we should do is lift directly our existing election period policy, which we adopted in October, if you recall, for the forthcoming election. The Local Government Act 2020 has been imposed on us or been at broad sense in between and there's a need for us to update that election period policy, it's been included there for completeness. Our solicitors will actually have us a new version of that which will, which will follow the local government rules, Victoria rules very closely and also be approved by them tomorrow morning for councillors to read. My recommendation would be that councillors adopt the draft governance rules so we can go to public comment on with the addition of chapter 7 being replaced by the election policy, election period policy with references to the new act in place. My apologies for the lie around that, I'm sure you can imagine how crazy things are in the legal world of local government solicitors at the moment. With the new act and 79 councils all demanding close to their time and I guess naturally some confusion ensued in that process. And lawyers always like confusion because it means a deep building start up as well. So I hope that's acceptable, I'm not wildly excited about having the complete draft this evening, but I think we do need to move forward to this to meet our first September deadline around accepting the governance rules and it gives an opportunity to include that 14-day period for public comment.
So to clarify, the document that will go out on comment is going to include?
It will include the new document and I'll have that to councillors first thing in the morning to me, I just promised I'll give them to us first thing in the morning, have those out to councillors for their feedback and we'll get that online tomorrow.
Thank you for confirming that and that gives us an opportunity as council also then to discuss the response from public.
Yes, because we're adopting a draft governance, Madam Mayor.
So as this is a draft document, that's what we are seeking. Councillors, any questions of the CEO, councillor Atkinson?
Just can councillors make contribution to the public comment?
We will do that as in our forum as councillors, because this is a council document, so our response is going to be as a group in discussions, questions can be directed to the CEO regarding the document and we can discuss it amongst ourselves, of course.
Just one, could council change the wording that is provided by lawyers in some interpretations of the act?
If I could, Madam Mayor, I think, I think it would have to be a very strong case there to override the recommendations of our lawyers, they are lawyers after all, we do pay them advice with advice on legal documents. We need to be very, very clear in interpretations of the act in this space. So it would have to be a very compelling argument to, to change wording to, to better interpret the act, if I put it that way.
I've read the act and I found it very clear and unambiguous, so I think we need to make sure that the lawyer's presentation is also clear and unambiguous.
I agree, I'd say I think the government sources that are presented are quite clear, but there are probably arguments around that, that's why we have lawyers in courts, I guess. But I think they're, they're quite good presented by lawyers and they do cover the issues we need covered off very clearly. And I think that we could waste a lot of time arguing the point around issues of semantics, to be frank.
Question? Councillor Hull?
The recommendation here, I just want to query the fact that you've been using the word adopt and the recommendation says endorse.
It should be endorsed, my apologies, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Semantics.
Talk differently.
It is.
Any other questions, councillors? We have a recommendation in three parts and councillor Beals to move and councillor Deusch to second. Councillor Beals, you wish to speak?
I just want to make a couple of comments, there's some areas of this I've read that I have issues with, but I'll wait to communicate your comments, consultation comes back. But if councillor Atkinson has an issue, if she wants to circle out to the other councillors, feel free to do it, you don't have to wait for me, it's in the head of the councillors and I'd hope you would do that, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you.
No further contribution? I shall put the recommendation to the vote in three parts, those in favour and against, and that is carried. Thank you councillors, item 3.4, the Public Transparency Policy, Mr CEO?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, as a part of the implementation of Local Government Act 2020, that will become a very hacking treasure over the next period of time, I think. Councils required to adopt a public transparency policy, which basically outlines the information that we have available, ways in which we're going to communicate clearly and transparent with our community around what we do. The policy identifies documents that are available under the, sorry, my apologies, under the Freedom Information Act and also records that we place on council's website for public viewing. The aim there is, I guess, is to be very, very clear with the community about documents that are available and our desire to be transparent in our communication with them and the limitations that are also on that around confidential information. This follows very closely prescription in the, that's been provided by Local Government Victoria in their, in their interpretation of the legislation. I think it's important at this point in time that we do follow those prescriptions closely as we initially adopt the policies, there are opportunities regularly to review those as we move forward, but I think it's important that we do stick quite closely to that for our own protection at the moment.
Are there any questions, councillors? We have a recommendation in two parts that we adopt the policy and place it on the council website. Do I have somebody to move? Councillor Deusch and seconded councillor Awur, councillor Deusch, would you like to speak?
It's a really nor brained and defoiled recommendation, as I said.
Councillor Awur, do you wish?
Yes, one of the things that I'm very confident with is the fact that all of these recommendations have been well thought out for our advice, so we need to follow them and do the right thing by what we're experiencing at the moment.
Thank you, councillor Beals?
When it says, for example, register with confidence of interest of local councillors and staff, is that just saying there is a register, if you apply, you get it, or will it be on the web?
The register itself will be on the website, councillor Deusch, on the left.
Councillor Atkinson?
I've read two different things in relation to that and I can't put my finger on where. One was that you keep your register and the other was that it is publicly available, so.
Where it says I keep the register, I'm responsible for ensuring that it's mine tamped and I believe that it should be publicly in front of them, I think that really greets the law in the rest of the state section. But I'll check that councillor Beals and send those to councillors tomorrow.
If I may make a comment, what you're talking about, that's what it is now, there's a register that you apply. So here's the reason I want to factor it in, none of these things can serve me in the press department, you never know.
Thank you. No further contribution from councillors? Then I shall put the recommendation to the vote, those in favour, against, and that is carried, thank you. Item 3.5, council expenses and support policy, again, Mr CEO, please say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, again, under the Local Government Act 2020, we're required to maintain a council expenses and support policy. This policy makes very clear the support and expenses reimbursement as well for councillors in their roles and when that's available, when it's not. I think the policy itself is very clear, it does follow again the model as well by LGD quite closely. There's also a lot of issue, this may be to you because there exists in our existing council expense policy. Yeah, I think it's actually fairly, yeah, policy's done.
Thank you, any questions, councillors? We have a recommendation that the council expenses and support policy be adopted, move councillor Beals, seconded councillor Deusch, would you like to speak? Any other councillors? No, I'll put the motion to the vote, those in favour, against, and that is carried. Mr CEO, item 3.6, we can have it be withdrawn?
That has been withdrawn, yes, council should have received advice of that today.
So item 3.6 is a late withdrawal from tonight's agenda?
I'd like to briefly explain why.
If you could, thank you, Mr CEO?
Yeah, I think this was an item that was going forward, was a panel was rescinding a council policy on garbage charges commercial on other tenant properties. The new Local Government Act requires this be included in our revenue and rating plan, which we'll adopt next year at the time we drop our budget. I think we just jumped the gun here and we're going to carry away with it in letting new act. We will of course require this in place for writing of those taxes this year. So we won't rescind it at this point in time, I'll also force a few legally in this.
Certainly would, thank you.
My apologies for that.
Thanks for that explanation, Mr CEO. Moving along to section 4 now, which is the part of meeting where we deal with committee minutes and reports. Item 4.1, section 86, committees of management minutes, and CEO?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, there's been one section 86 committee meeting since we last had council meeting, that's all regular reserve, they're pretty decided people make because they have the. more rec reserved, they're pretty excited people might because they have received a group in their, in their important grant from the state government to improve their female friend relationships, and they've got this argument one meeting, and that's been those, no council representative, but it was one carrying on that group, and their minutes are there.
And, Mr. CEO, I think I receive a positive feedback from the Valora Recreation Reserve many members, that your attendance at those meetings has been very much appreciated by that committee, and in some ways that's preceding or creating the natural transition that we're going to make from section 86 committee meetings to community asset managing committee. So, it's great, but that's almost a test model, and it's been very, very well received.
They're a pretty good bunch of people, I quite enjoy going to those meetings, it's good.
Any questions, councillors? We have a recommendation that we receive the minutes of the Valora Recreation Committee of Management Meeting. Councillor Beals, seconded? Councillor Hull? Nobody to speak? Thank you. Those in favour? And against? That is carried. I'm section five, section five, item five point one, assembly of councillors. Mr. CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Been two assemblies of councillors held since our last meeting, that on the 16th of June and the 7th of July, the agendas files were attached in the documents, and the recommendation is there.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? We have the recommendation that the report be received. Do I have somebody to move? Councillor Deusch, seconded? Councillor Allwood? Wish to speak? There is no comment, then I shall put that to the vote, those in favour? And against? And that is carried. We have no notices of motion, there are no section six, like item no section seven for urgent business. We now are approaching the confidential part of our meeting for this month. In accordance with the Local Government Act, the following agenda items are listed for consideration. We have an ANZ letter of offer for consideration, and also waiver of rates and interest matters. So, I have a recommendation that we close the open meeting to the public pursuant to the act, and that's moved councillor Beals, seconded councillor Brakewait, and we will rejoin, we will rejoin the open meeting at the conclusion of the confidential items being discussed. So, those in favour? And those against? That is carried. The meeting is closed. Thank you. Welcome back to the, the council meeting of the 21st of July 2020. We have concluded our confidential business, we have a recommendation that the open council meeting will recommence. Somebody to move that? Councillor Hull and seconded councillor Beals, those in favour? And against? And that is carried. A final item for the evening is the lifting of confidentiality of closed session resolutions. The recommendation is that the confidentiality of the report and decision in relation to items eight point two, eight point three, and eight point four of the confidential agenda not be lifted. Those in favour? Somebody to move? Councillor Deusch, somebody to second? Councillor Beals? Those in favour? And against? That is carried, and I declare the meeting closed. At what time is that?
Twelve to seven.
At 6:56 PM. Thank you, councillors.